So seeing and hearing a presence of a quorum calling to order the meeting of the Amherst School Committee at 6:39 PM on Tuesday, December 13th. Because we're in person, we don't have to take a roll call, except I want to confirm we have a member on the phone confirm that you can hear us, Irv, and that we can hear you. Can you hear us, Irv?
I definitely can hear you.
And can folks hear Irv?
Yes.
Okay, great. And I think what I'll do, I'll also, when you're speaking, Irv, I'll make sure I hold you up to the microphone so that they can hear you. So our first item is, well, first I should welcome everybody. Person that's been, it's been two years, or over two years, is to approve our minutes. And the minutes for our last two meetings are attached to the agenda under public comment. Are there any edits? Let's start with 18th. Irv, did you have any edits or comments on the October 18th?
None at all.
None. Seeing none, then let's look at the November minutes. Irv, did you have any comments on the November minutes?
None at all.
For the November 17th minutes, we're only approving the Amherst portion of the minutes, right?
Thank you for that clarification. Yes.
Sure.
Yep. I move that we approve the minutes from October 18th, 2022, and the Amherst Committee, School Committee portion of the minutes from November 17th. Is there a second?
Second.
Who said that? Moved by McDonald, Allison, and seconded by Ben, and we'll take a vote. And because we have a member on the phone, I will do a roll call vote, so.
Peter, aye.
Ben?
Ben, aye.
Irv?
Irv, aye.
Jennifer?
Aye.
And Allison, aye. The motion passes unanimously.
I have a question. Is Maylene, is she gonna, is she gonna watch the video, or how are the minutes for this meeting gonna happen?
Um, Maylene, yeah, I'll, Mike, can you answer that?
Yep, so Maylene is going to continue with the region, but not for Amherst or my other committee I work for, and so the person who's gonna be taking the minutes is gonna do it from the video.
Okay.
Yeah. If it does a virtual meeting, then the person can attend, but an in-person one wasn't possible, so.
Okay. Thank you.
And we had no written or voicemail public comment this evening, but open the floor to any folks in the room that would like to speak. And just to remind our in-person public comment, we ask that you come to the microphone in the front and state your name, and then you have three minutes to speak. Are there any folks wishing to speak? Yep. Then we will move on to superintendent's update, so turn that over to you, Mike.
Sure, thank you. So first, I want to thank Amherst Media for working really hard to facilitate us being back in person tonight, so thank you for everyone who worked on that, and there's still some on our end. We have to, you know, fine tune some things to make sure that we are supporting Amherst Media in the best way, but we're working through those challenges, and first time we're doing this in, you know, almost three years, so there's some little, you know, tweaks to make, but I really appreciate the patience and perseverance of Amherst Media, so thank you to Alexis and everybody on your team for their communication throughout and working through that. And I have a couple of updates to make, so the first one is that I want to acknowledge, as many of you know, that Nick Gaffey, longtime principal at Wildwood School, announced that his retirement will occur at the end of June of 2023, so I want to publicly thank Nick for his tremendous years of service, not only at Wildwood, but as principal at Mark's Meadow and as a kindergarten teacher at Mark's Meadow School, and so really excited for Nick. I was there when he shared it with staff, and a lot of tears in the room, including Nick's about that. He means so much to the community, so I want to thank Nick for all of his work and continued work for the rest of the year. Let's see, I'll skip around a bit, sorry, this isn't a hodgepodge of items, but just want to acknowledge about eight days ago, on December 5th, we had some excellent math professional development, thanks to Mary Kylie, who's here, and Stephanie Joyce, who put it together, and really trying to focus on teachers observing each other as they teach the I-ready curriculum as a tool to improve all of our practice, to be able to not just watch videos or have professional developers, those are great, but actually to see Amherst kids being taught by Amherst teachers with the new curriculum. And we tried to do that yesterday in the snow and everything, it just didn't make sense that morning, but it's a strategy we've used in the past, and we want to really get back to get in each other's rooms and kind of demystify the process of that, we're talking about practice, right? And if we were talking about instructional practices, the best thing to do is actually see what's happening in classrooms. So we did a number of different teachers, thanks to Tim Sheehan, who hosted at Crocker Farm, but the idea was for folks to get in each other's classroom, see how everybody's going, and then have rich, detailed discussions about how it's going, what's working well, and what we can improve. So thanks to Mary and Stephanie and others who are involved. About a little over a week ago as well, or maybe it was, yeah, a little over a week ago, there was a vaccine clinic in town where there were $75 gift certificates offered for a booster shot. It was a successful effort. I was there, and I saw a number of staff members and students in our district receiving the boosters. I want to thank the town of Amherst, once they found out about the state program, they reached directly out to us, we shared it out with the community, and it was, it was nice to see, and it was nice little connections. I was there with one of my kids, who recognized immediately an employee in the cafeteria at their school, and was like, "Oh, my God!", you know, and just had these nice connections, and as I was leaving, I saw a couple of staff members from our district coming in, so really, really nice to see, and thanks to the town of Amherst and the state for sponsoring that, and they had 465 people get boosted that day, which is the largest clinic that we've had in the town, period. So it was busy. Crest people were out, just sorting people out, and, you know, helping people with lines because it was pretty cold out, and making sure everyone was taken care of, and they had candy, which really helped for our kids who were there as well. Maybe the adults too, but the kids seemed particularly interested in the candy. I want to, we got two DESI grants since we've last met. The first is a grant for social emotional support, which is $100,000 primarily for school adjustment counselors for the rest of the school year to be hired, and that's a lot of the work of Dr. Faye Brady and others who worked on that, so we're really excited for that. We know that the pandemic has had major effect on our students, and we're really happy to be supporting that across our three elementary schools. And then we also got an 83, I think, I think it was $83,000 staff diversity grant from DESI, which is, we've had before, and it really promotes, working with particularly paraeducators in our district, not exclusively, but particularly, who, to get their licenses and degrees so that they can become teachers in our district. We've had a lot of successful examples of that, many of them know our community, they know our kids, and we love hiring from within, and it really has boosted our diversity of staff rates in the district. So, you know, Doreen Cunningham with the lead on that, so thank you, Doreen. And all of those things, someone who doesn't get spoken about enough is Shannon Bernakia, who some of you met when we were doing ESSER reports, our grants manager, who very quietly does an amazing job maintaining, I think between our three districts, it's like 40-some-odd grants that she manages. So, you know, it's not the glorious kind of work, right, but it is the work that provides significant financial resources, and the last couple of years, we've done very well with competitive grant cycles. Both of these were competitive grants, they weren't like entitlement grants like Title One we get based on our population, these were highly competitive grants. We had, Family Center has had a lot of success with the coat drive, they had a huge donation of brand-new coats, so we had some gently-used coats, but also some brand-new coats. We've given out dozens to families, we know, like, in the weather we're having this week, how, you know, that old expression, "There's no bad weather, there's bad clothing", you know, I am not a believer in that statement, but I understand that good clothing allows for the participation of our students in a lot of fun activities. This year also, we had originally, when the pandemic started, we'd bought a number of thermometers. We didn't have as much use for, you know, it's one of those things, you look at April 2020, and you're purchasing things, and then in the end, you know, we didn't have as much use, so along with coats for families who wanted thermometers, we were able to provide those thermometers for families, you know, with the number of illnesses going around separate from just COVID right now, we had families who were greatly appreciative, and they were like the quick read, you know, you press the button, and you have the forehead, they're not the other ones that perhaps are, take longer or more invasive from a kid's perspective. So that was another thing that we were able to provide, so thanks to Robin Supranad and Rupert and Ben for thinking, thinking through all those things. Sorry, Ben's right here, but with your other hat on. We had a really nice concert at all of our elementary schools with upper grades, with high school music students coming to perform something that we have gotten away from with the pandemic. The kids loved it, you know, I heard from all the principals, the kids were just eating it up, the students were doing such a nice job. Yasu, who's instrumental music teacher, was at the elementary, but is now at the secondary, really wanted to connect elementary kids and get them excited for what it looks like, and they created a program that was really, like, really fun for younger kids, so, you know, thank you to Yasu and our folks for having, putting that on. We, as you know, I'm part of RIAC, the Racial and Balance Advisory Committee, or Council, excuse me, and yesterday we met with Commissioner Riley, shared some of our priorities, I think it was a fruitful dialogue to share, you know, our council's perspective on things, and appreciate Commissioner Riley for being present for that. Sorry, I've got a number, I apologize. A couple more. This year, we are moving to digital report cards at the elementary level. We will print them for families who do not have internet access, we have that list already, as well as for families whose language is not English and Spanish. English and Spanish will occur naturally, much for those of you who have secondary, or most folks who have secondary kids, it goes through Power School, so it actually gives us families an earlier entry into, you know, the parent portal. On Power School, it'll save about $5,000 in postage and shipping, you know, postage, not postage, handling, you know, like, all the paper and stuff, it'll save about 10,000 sheets of paper, which is a lot of sheets of paper every year for all of our elementary students. So again, we will still print for subpopulations where we need to, but we think that this is both good for families, good for the environment, and good for our resource management. And my last one that I want to say, it's just a nice story where our bus drivers don't always get the shout-outs that, you know, they maybe ought to, and we had, we had an example last, two weeks ago, where a bus driver noticed a change in behavior of a student, let folks know in the transportation office, who let the family center know, reached out, and it was, we were able to do a significant intervention for a kid that wasn't necessarily showing in school the same behaviors that they were on the bus, and it made a huge difference for this kid and the family, so I just want to, you know, thank all the bus drivers, they see the kids first thing in the morning, and they make a huge difference, and they're sort of our first responders, right? They're seeing kids in this very unique setting, and, you know, that story was, you know, because confidentiality, can't get into the specifics, but it was a hugely impactful notice by the bus driver that had a major impact on this kid and the family, so just want to say that out loud. And I think that's my update for the evening.
Any questions for Mike?
I have a question. You mentioned a DESI grant of $100,000 for social emotional support, and you mentioned counselors and Faye Brady. What does that, what does that look like? What will that mean?
Yeah, so I can send the more formal breakdown, but essentially, it allows us to hire additional, we call it tier-two support, so additional mental health supports for each of the three elementary schools. One of the challenges will be finding people, right, so they're, it's not done, we just found out about the grant like a week ago, but the idea is to provide more ongoing counseling support for students during the school day than we have current capacity to do so.
Great, wonderful. Peter?
I can't believe you took away the ability for kids to intercept their report card in the mail, it's like.
That is, there is that, it wasn't the primary focus, but it does save that bus ride home awkwardness that sometimes occurs for elementary kids, yes.
Right, no, no, that is nice. The grants are unbelievable, this is such a repeating theme with our districts, and like, I feel like, you know, comparative to what I see on the, on the mailing lists for school committees across the state and talking to other districts, we do really well with, with grant writers, and it just can't be stressed enough. I mean, we all remember how much discussion we had over about $50,000 in the budget last year, right? And this is 183,000 just for these two grants, so it just, I can't thank our grant writers enough, you know, the people that do that every day without any, without any, you know, external visibility, it's really appreciated. And obviously, bittersweet for Nick, I mean, what a beloved leader in this district for so many years, going, not just for Wildwood, but going back to Mark's Meadow. I mean, I've heard from a handful of people saying, you know, like, just, just that, that heart that he brought and the connection, and I, you know, maybe there's something we can do towards the end of the year for the public to be, to have some kind of, show their appreciation, just because so many people who talk about their positive experience at Wildwood or Mark's Meadow, you know, talk about Nick and the culture he brings, so, you know, big, big loss, obviously, but, you know, good retirement to him.
Absolutely, and I think, you know, as the principals of rearing their school and proving plans in the spring, he's steadfastly moving forward and wants to leave the school in the best place possible, including some visioning for the future, so I think there'll be an opportunity for the committee, as well as the public, to have, have that opportunity come springtime.
That's great. Irv, did you have any comments or questions for, for Mikes?
Two things, I'm really, I was really, really sad to hear that Nick was going to retire. He was one of those principals I've been knowing for years and years and years. In fact, I remember him alongside Mike, as they were coming up through the system, but Nick is a special person, and he's going to be missed tremendously. I was really sad about that, and so I'm really glad that we're mentioning it, and I'm hopeful that we'll have other ways of honoring him.
Good. Thank you.
Yeah, I was, I was just gonna jump on the Nick train, to kind of, well, acknowledge like the fact that, I mean, in my day job, that's actually who hired me in the district, and I actually knew him prior to coming to the district, because he had a family member that was where I worked or whatever. What I was gonna ask, and I guess we would need his permission, he had like the, the most awesome retirement video I've ever seen in my life, and like, I could explain to anyone in this world who Nick Gaffey is, but that video does such a great job, I was wondering if there's some way we could like share that publicly, with his permission, of course.
Yeah, I will, I will ask Nick, I think it'd be a great feature for a newsletter in the future, and he shared it out with his, I mean, it is a public document, he shared it with all the families and staff at Wildwood, so I'm sure he would be very comfortable with that. Everyone get to meet his cat.
Right.
Did you have another question?
Yeah, can we just confirm that the Amherst Media feed is up and running, either on the internet or on the TV? I don't know if the rules are the same since we're in person, but if the feed isn't up and running, I just want to make sure that members of the public are able to watch the meeting.
So I can walk over and check, I mean, from an OML perspective, it's not needed.
Yeah, because it's in person.
Right. And we should find out, yeah.
Thank you.
If you want to move on with that meeting.
Okay. So next up is a chairs update, and I have two, two items. The first is that there was a meeting of the Budget Coordinating Group last week, it just seems like ancient history already. We called that meeting after the, or we asked, requested for that meeting to be held after we attended the Financial Indicators Meeting. Based on the discussion that we had there, we were aware that that guidance was not going to be sufficient, just knowing what our cost escalation is, and that we have two contracts not settled in the region, so, I mean, in the, in the broader, the three districts. So we requested that, and Peter and I are the representatives from this committee on that. It was a good discussion, I think, I, you know, there was a challenge, you know, very open conversation, I think, from the Town Council and Finance Committee part about sort of what their, what their constraints are, and the challenges that they're facing within their own budget as well. I don't feel, I mean, let's Peter to chime in, because we have school committee update right after this, but I, I think, I don't sense that there's going to be movement on guidance from them, but I think there was, I would say, an openness and sort of an empathy in terms of all of the, the issues that we laid out. I think if, I believe that the recording is available, but one, sort of our back-of-the-envelope calculations was that our, in order for us to maintain current services in, in the Amherst Elementary District would require almost a four point, at least, sorry, a 4% increase from, in-town funding. And for those that don't have that number at the top of their, their minds right now, the, the guidance from the town was 2.5%, so there's a, that's a big difference. And I'll let Peter talk about the items that he raised about sort of going forward into the future, but we are using our federal COVID funds to support our budget this year for just core services, not necessarily what was, you know, the extraordinary costs or expenses that the, the funding was intended for, but just to maintain our core level of services, and I think it was about $400,000 in our current budget, so we still will not have that. So when we get to talking about budget process, we can sort of dig into that a lot more. And before I turn it over to you for, for additional updates on that, I sort of connected to that, by charter, we're required to give an annual report to the town, to the Town Council on the state of the schools, it's part of their state of the town, and that is going to be on the 19th of December, which I believe is next week. I have to turn the report in tomorrow, by tomorrow, and that is attached in the chairs update. There are, I will note that I didn't catch all of the updates, and there are some slides you will see, it has the narrative from last year's version of the report, so, so it's not final, final at this point, but, but the data and the slides and the charts that are in there are, are what's going to be shared at the state of the town, and that is the 19th, I'm not sure what time yet that that will be, but the Town, Town Council President, the Town Manager, the Chair of the Library Trustees, and myself will be there to present this to, to the Town Council. And I'll just move on now to school committee updates and let Peter add to, oh, did you have some?
Yeah, just, so I just talked to our friends at Amherst Media, so the good news, I'll do good news, that is, the good news is that the recording will work fine, the challenging news is because, and I don't have all the technical language, but there's the connections that used to exist, don't exist from a connectivity perspective in terms of putting cable in, and Amherst Media no longer being on the cable line because they're moved, so the live stream, the bandwidth's not necessarily supporting getting it to where it needs to be to be livestreamed clearly, it's like a weird, I saw it over there, it's a weird screen, but the recording that will come out looks crystal clear, at least on the monitor I saw. So that's a problem that we'll have to work on with the town and Amherst Media, that's not Amherst Media's fault, I want to be really clear, but in terms of the recording, it looked very good, and the sound is working well. Sorry to interrupt.
Thank you. Peter, can you add to the VCG?
Sure, I mean, I think you summarized it pretty well. One of the main points we're making is that with 2.5% guidance in our back-of-the-envelope calculation, and we were stressing, you know, this is the very beginning of the budget process, right? We don't have state aid, we don't know exactly how much health insurance is going to be, we haven't all had discussions here, and so, you know, we're not able to do an exact spreadsheet, but it, it certainly, you know, what we were sharing is that more than half of our budget is staffing, and so when you have, you know, what they're projecting, an 8% increase with health insurance, in addition to other inflation-adjusted increases for transportation, it's really difficult to see how we don't have significant staff and servicing cuts in order to meet that guidance without some other additional source of revenue. And, you know, I, I think the response we had was, was understanding and hearing that, and sharing that other departments in the town are in the same boat, that they have to deal with the same guidance, they're getting hit by the same health insurance increase, by the same inflation-adjusted expenses, and so it's a matter of, it's a matter of figuring, figuring that out. And, you know, the sort of two themes that came up in the discussion, one is the sound expressing that they can't fund everything, and I think we heard a little bit of, I wouldn't say frustration, maybe, so much as acknowledgement, that the Town Council is faced with a lot of requests to fund a lot of things, and there's a, they can't fund everything, and so, you know, we didn't hear any, any opinion about, you know, we don't value schools, and we don't value staff, we don't want to pay.
... stunning relationship to what is possible to be forthcoming during this budget round, and we really are going to have to have a lot more information, because it looks like this is not going to be a good year.
Thank you.
Could we ask Irv to mute himself when he's not talking so that we don't get his background noise? I don't know if he could hear that.
Irv, there's a, an ask if, that you, if you can mute your phone when you're not talking, because we're hearing a lot of feedback.
There is zero background noise in this room, because there's no one in here but me, so I don't know where the noise could be coming from.
It might be just you turning pages and writing on the desk that probably, that are getting amplified on the phone.
But I assure you that I am not writing on the desk and I am not turning pages.
Thank you. Any other updates from the committee? No? Okay. Then we'll move on to new and continuing business, and our first item is the Crocker Farm Cubby Project.
Yep, and so Jonathan Salvin is here, so I'll queue it up, so you can take a second. But, so last spring, I want to thank Ms. Chow, or Jennifer, sorry, who raised this topic about Crocker Farm School and a potential school improvement, kind of the physical space. For those of you who haven't been in classrooms in Crocker Farm, there are two sets of cubbies in each room, one is in the wall, but one is actually adjacent to the wall, a couple feet over, that takes away a significant amount of real estate, and this came into play in, for many ways, in terms of accessibility, students who are, or staff members who have mobility challenges, but particularly when we got into the early days of COVID, and we were looking at how far desks away, we, it made much more acute, I became much more acutely aware, and I worked at Crocker Farm for five years, so I feel kind of guilty saying this, when you're trying to chase, space out desks six feet, you really think about space differently, and we became more aware of how much of an impact it has on the classroom, available classroom space. And so Jennifer raised an idea with us about taking, removing that barrier, the physical barrier in the room, and thinking about another alternative, so that was a really good idea. We, we work with our partners at Kuhn Riddle, and Chris, excuse me, Chris, Jonathan's here.
He's been preparing for a while.
Yeah, I don't know where that came from, and worked with one of his colleagues, and Rupert and Principal Derek Shea and myself, to think of a couple of different options and alternatives, and we sort of landed on one, we think, both fiscally, but also from a kind of Occam's razor, removing the challenge and, and moving it without doing more than we need to do. I think we landed in a, in a good place, so these are, there was, in the packet, there was both cost estimates as well as proposed plans, and I think I'll turn it over to Jonathan from Kuhn Riddle to talk, talk through what we're talking about now, and what would be the implications, and any, you know, potential code issues that we looked at and were able to resolve, if that's okay.
Great.
Thank you for being here.
Yes, so just for the record, and hopefully I'm close enough that this is picking me up, I'm Jonathan Salvin with Kuhn Riddle Architects, and as Mike very nicely kind of prefaced, we look at this a couple ways, but what we're going to see tonight is, I think, where we've landed and what we've cost estimated, and this is one of my first live meetings in a long time, so I did not bring a pointer, which would have done, you can watch later, or recording any good anyways, but I might occasionally ask Mike with his pointer to.
Sure.
I mean, I might, there might be one that I have access to, if you want one.
about five feet away from the wall that we can see here. Mike, maybe you can quickly screen with your mouse, and so later folks can see it. There we go. And so you can see just the corner of that island, and there are an equal number of cubbies in that location as there are on the corridor wall. And so we're going to take that grouping, and we're going to take them apart, take the bulletin board off the backside where that exists, and move it out into the hallway, which is a relatively straightforward task. There is adequate space in the hallway to do that. There are a couple places where we're going to have to relocate tack boards and/or have to adapt a group of these cubbies to things like outlets and fire extinguishers on the wall. But it's a relatively straightforward task. If Mike could scroll down a little bit, there we go. In blue there, you can see those are the cubbies that are being removed. And I think in the end, we landed on just doing this work in the classrooms that are on that north corridor, not the ones that are in the south corridor, which will be first grade?
Kindergarten.
Kindergarten classroom, sorry.
Yeah.
And there, having the cubbies with good access and observation to the teachers seem to still take priority for obvious reasons with kindergartners.
The other thing with the kindergarten rooms is they're larger than the rooms for grades one through five or six, depending on how you think about it. So don't have as many, and they're positioned in a different, they're physically in a different place in the room, separate even from the size. So according to Mr. Shea, there wasn't a need to reorient or to move those in terms of the space in the same way there is on the back corridor rooms. Yep.
So obviously, when we pick these things up, we don't expect that there is carpet underneath them, because they would have been installed directly on the slab in all likelihood. So we looked at two ways to kind of deal with the hole in the floor, either patch it with...
But really, we're moving forward. We're collaborating with specialists and special teachers, and planning for music teachers at sixth grade and seven and eight to work out schedules. We are, you know, the bell schedule really hasn't changed much since we first presented it. We've posted for the administrator job, we have applicants, and those interviews will occur at the beginning of the school, or the beginning of the next calendar here, sorry, I said that wrong, in early January. But Doreen Cunningham is starting to organize interview teams, and then they'll do work and they'll make a recommendation to me. So that's, you know, continuing to work well. We are meeting with elementary, we will be meeting after the break with elementary faculty and staff to talk about the different staffing models, based on our conversations. I think we'll do that actually, likely right after the break, we'll send something out to staff later this week about that, so that they can be surveyed and try, we can better understand people's preferences between the four schools. In terms of naming conventions, our current plan is to capture all the suggestions that came through and actually bring them back to the fifth grade students, and have them be involved in voting or choosing a name. We're not doing the vote-y, vote-face kind of thing, where like anyone, anything goes. We'll, we'll collect, I don't know if you know that whole story, but we're collecting finalist names that are all vetted and approved, and then bringing them to fifth grade students. But we think it's an important step for them to feel ownership of this new school. And, you know, sometimes the first impression of ownership can, is hard to undo. And we want them to say the first thing we're really engaging with that's going to be really visible is, what do you want this school to be called? And giving them choices. So we're moving forward with that. The world language option is no different than what we talked about last time. I want to thank Will Roundy, who I think did an exquisite job explaining really complex language matters. And I think with all of this, and we say this at the end of the document, this is year one. We expect year one to look better than year three and year five. Really what we're looking for is, how do we make sure we're holding these students, we're transitioning to a sixth grade experience that's really meaningful and wonderful? And I think over time, there's going to be a lot of opportunities for both refinement, evaluation, to understand better what's working, what's not, and also to build better bridges with our seventh and eighth grade colleagues. One of the advantages of this is that we will have people in the same building who can be meeting, can be saying, what does math curriculum look like, grade six through eight? I think there's some, you know, feedback I've received from staff, they were hoping that would happen sooner, especially for middle school staff. And I love that they want to be connecting, like that's music to my ears. And what I've continued to say is, our focus right now is making sure that kids feel welcomed, honored, and connected when they've been in the building. And those intangible things are where my focus is, and the tangible parts of like, how are we going to collaborate together as teachers? We'll work those out over time. But the focus right now is getting kids up here feeling comfortable, confident, and loving it, right? If we do that, lots of, lots of room for improvement in those collaboration areas across sixth to eighth. If we don't get that right, that's going to be really where our challenges lie. So that's where we are. Mary, is there anything you'd like to add to?
I think that was a good summary.
Okay, thank you. And we're happy to answer any questions. We do have a suggested motion in the packet, or, yeah, in the packet, I should say, or on board docs, which I can have up here, which I wrote, which means it's far from perfect. But it's, the draft motion is listed above. But, you know, we're looking forward to having a vote tonight, so we can move forward in communicating with our, you know, the elementary school staff about the upcoming steps. And I think the last thing I'll say is, I really appreciate how many people have reached out, both in surveys, but also informally. Mary and I both work in the middle school, and how many people are stopping us and saying, hey, I thought of this thing. And often the thing they thought of is like, oh, we should think about that differently. And the same happens when we're in the elementary schools. So we're certainly receiving from the community, but particularly from staff members, you know, who work in the buildings, know the buildings better than I do. It's been really heartening to continue to receive that feedback, and that there's forced choices. You know, it's, like even the conversation about where the specialized special ed programs are, we now have them spaced much better, that came directly from staff feedback of like, yes, we want sixth, seventh, and eighth graders in specialized programs to feel connected, and we want them spread out, and we have a much better solution than we started with. And that really is directly based on feedback. So just appreciate the engagement and the feedback we continue to receive.
I have one question to start. So I, in the summary, talked about sort of the bus plan and having two separate drop-offs. And I'm going to acknowledge, we have a quorum here of another committee that I think this decision probably impacts that committee as well. So I don't want to, I don't think we, it would be appropriate for us to talk about it, but it did concern me because of topics of conversation at that committee, how this change might impact that in terms of lateness of arrival at the high school, for example. So that was a question in my mind, and wondering if that is something that we might need to have a joint meeting to sort of think that through together.
Yeah, and I think there was, I think that's spot on, and I think we had some dialogue this week, or this week or at the end of last week even, about just how to make our shared bus routes between the middle school, high school more efficient. And this is, plays into that as well. So I think that'd be worthy of a point to come back to, as well as bathrooms. And I think what we're going to find is, there's a number of these issues that on December 13th aren't fully resolved, that we'll need to keep on, you know, discussing over the next couple of months. You know, I think, I feel very proud of where we are in our core programming, and are there nuances in logistics that's something to work out? Absolutely, I'd be the first to say that. And that's a, that's a really important one.
Jennifer?
First, thank you for what you said about naming, the namies, that the naming, the names are going to be pre-vetted before they're put, because that was my question, like, is this really how we're going to choose them? So that's great. I have a few questions about bathrooms. So if we, if we approve this motion, we're still, we're still not going to have tonight have decided on the bathroom issue, on whether or not the bathrooms will be exclusive to sixth graders?
Yeah, I think that's one of the issues that, and Mary certainly can jump in if she'd like, that I continue to receive lots of feedback on, and the feedback goes two ways. One is, I think there's a genuine acknowledgement among many, not all, that it'd be great for sixth graders to have their own bathroom spaces that were exclusive. There's a couple specialized programs, like, there's going to be some mixing, you know, based on the map. And I think then the other piece of feedback I hear, particularly from middle school staff, is a concern about, well, are students, seventh and eighth grade students have, there's a bathroom set on the other side, but are they going to go downstairs to use the bathrooms? Is that their additional set? And I'll speak for myself, I'm still processing the feedback I'm receiving on that. Some of the written feedback is in the packet tonight. And I think there are legitimate concerns on both sides. And so what I'd like to do is actually have that as an agenda item, just exclusively bathrooms for sixth grade, and maybe that's a joint, you know, to Allison's point, maybe that's a joint topic, because it is really about the impact on seventh and eighth graders. And have a public discussion about that. Because I think it is something that, some ways, I'm receiving more feedback on than the academic program. I take that as two things. One is, people are pretty pleased with what we planned for academic program, and it's where the safety concerns that we've heard from the beginning, it's sort of like the nexus of that right now. So what I don't have tonight is like, to your point, is like, absolutely, we have a decision, because I do think, as opposed to the other space concerns, which are more in my bailiwick, I do think bathrooms are in a safety place, and I do actually think that's at the, a different level of, you know, like, I'm not planning to come back to and say, we're going to move this room to, like, where the boxes go. I think we're pretty settled on that. But, you know, where like world language is, that's not what I'm going to come back to. But I think bathrooms is worthy of a school committee discussion, and perhaps even a school committee vote, because that gets into, you know, closer to policy.
Yeah.
Because it's about safety. So to answer your question is yes, I am asking for a vote. And we tried to word it specifically about the sixth grade program as described in the executive summary. But I think that's one of the issues. I think the bus, we can probably come back and have a discussion. I don't think that involves a vote of the school committee. But I think the bathrooms is a, is a high enough priority for the community and for staff that I would like to have that be a standalone item.
Yeah, I agree. I think that's a great idea to have it, to have that be a topic that we discuss. Because, so I'm looking, I looked at the feedback from the survey, which is posted on the board docs, and, so I don't know if that survey went to current fifth grade parents, I'm not really sure who it went to, but...
Went to all families and all, all elementary families and all staff.
Okay, great. Because, like, I feel like, I'm just going to say the thing that we all know, which is that behavior issues happen in the bathroom. Like, that's where, that's where students are more likely to, to not follow the rules. But I feel like, you know, I'm the parent of a middle schooler now, so I kind of have a better understanding of what that means and how it impacts my student than I did when I was the parent of an elementary school. So I feel like if you asked an elementary school parent, do you want your sixth grader to have dedicated bathrooms, they'd be like, sure, I don't know. Like, and even if you told them, like, behavior issues, they might not really grasp what that all means. So I wasn't sure if the, if the people who answered the survey were current. So it's good to hear that it was a mix of everyone. But I think it would be good to hear from current middle, current seventh and eighth graders, how, what would you have wanted when you were in sixth grade? And current, I'm sure we've also heard from staff about the bathroom issue, because, to your point, it is a safety thing, and I think it would be a good idea to talk, to talk more about it with this committee. I also just want to, I just want to, that it would be great, I'm not sure if there's a unisex bathroom included in the plan. I know there's a girls' bathroom and a boys' bathroom. Is there also going to be a unisex bathroom for the sixth graders? And how does that fit into the mix of exclusive or dedicated bathrooms?
Yeah, I can try to bring up the map. While I'm pulling it up, I want to thank, yeah, because this is, this isn't the best map, but I think I can walk through. I want to thank Jennifer for taking me up on the offer to walk with Mary and myself, it was really helpful to have your perspective. So essentially, we're looking at, you know, much of this back hallway and a wraparound. There is a door here that currently is open that we would have closed. So it does provide visual and acoustic privacy from the sixth grade wing this side to where, starting on C7A, C6A, and C6, where the seventh and eighth grade wing starts. There's a boys' bathroom and a girls' bathroom within this kind of band. And where this, next to CM1, it looks like a box, there's an adult bathroom that's individual, and then there's a unisex kids' bathroom that's an individual stall. So for exactly that reason, you said, that was actually one of the things that pulled us over this way, is the capacity to have a single stall within the sixth grade wing. Because when we were originally talking about here, it didn't really have that kind of aspect. So that's one of the reasons we swung around this corner, first because there's a door here, which really separates things, but also because there is an individual stall bathroom, as addition to the larger boys' and girls' rooms on that side. And I want to say the offer to walk around is open to any committee member, so if anyone else is interested in taking us up on it, it was really helpful. I don't know if it was helpful for Jennifer, I think so, but hope so, but it was really helpful for us actually to have that. And especially if we come back to the bathroom piece, understanding where the downstairs bathroom is, I think you've learned more walking it than you do from my description or maps. Yep.
I remember the, the walking tour when, with the working group that worked on this, and that was really, really helpful, I remember. Peter?
Yeah, so, yeah, so a few things. So one, just to piggyback on the idea of having a separate agenda item for the bathrooms, yes, I think that's an excellent suggestion, for a number of reasons, given the frequency of feedback that continues to come in, that parents want to make sure that they're, that they're heard, right? Obviously, if people are in disagreement, then not everyone is going to be in agreement with the solution ultimately, but very important for people to feel like their, their input was considered. As well as, you know, one, it would be great to have, have staff there as well, from the, from the middle school and sixth grade, possibly, if that's available. We have some armed staff here tonight, I'm sure they have, you know, I always feel like, you know, on school committee, you know, we're on this, like, some thousand-foot level, and, you know, you don't always, you know, present company excluded, you don't always see, you know, the boots on the ground, right? So, so that would be great. And I, so the summary is a really, you know, again, taking a few steps back, is a really impressive synthesis of a lot of different discussions we've had. I kind of feel like, if this is the only meeting that you're watching about this, it seems odd that we might be voting on something that is so detailed and has so many parts with this brief of a discussion. It's kind of like what happened with Comanants Days. By the time we had gotten to the end, we had so thoroughly evaluated everything that the final discussion was pretty short when we voted. So, but it, but I think it's an acknowledgement of the process. The one, the one detailed thing that has always come back to me when I've, and maybe this is, I just don't understand how it flows, but the morning schedule, right? So you have almost, almost four hours of academics in the morning before you get to lunch, without a scheduled movement break. And obviously, that doesn't mean that a student is sitting there in their seat for four hours in a row. But if, if you could just talk about, you know, what are the thoughts about how to, how to, how to address that, right? If you have students that are in this really new situation, you know, starting their day at a much different time, and then coming in with like, a whole lot of academics right in a row, what's the, what's the mindset?
Yeah. Perhaps, Mary, would you mind talking through that?
Sure.
The program?
Do you want to stand up, or just...
Yeah, because I think the microphone will be needed. Thank you.
Sure. So the, the summer group was very mindful of that. And when, this was the original summer planning group that included middle school colleagues as well as elementary teachers and other central office people and so on. And the thought was that the model that they favored had teachers teaching either math science or ELA social studies. And so they were going to be with the children for, for longer periods of time. And that was going to permit cross-disciplinary work, but also permit them to control the schedule more. So they were saying right from the beginning, these kids are going to have to have breaks. And people were talking about snacks as well. And so that hasn't been worked out, the details of that, but from the very beginning.
Right.
The thinking was that there would be breaks built in to those core academic blocks, for sure. And then throughout the day as well, we're assuming that at lunchtime, as happens with the seventh and eighth graders now, many of the students and Ms. Dykes can speak to them, but eat and then go outside and use a lot of that time for movement. There'll also be opportunities for movement in the elective block, in the exploratories block, there'll be some movement options, PE options. There's also a short refresh time built in several times a week in the early afternoon. And they have also the crew, which is the social-emotional learning time, that will definitely include structured and unstructured movement opportunities.
Meg?
And if I could add absolutely everything that Mary said, but additionally, that was one of the advantages from my perspective of the schedule we went with, there's two core teachers. Because when you have three core teachers, there's a lot more movement between classes, but as we saw, that movement's like, not very far. And then coordinating times outside or recreational kind of, quote-unquote, recess kind of activities gets hard, because everyone's crammed there, you're dividing it into thirds, even though the instructional time is more or less the same, you're coordinating with a lot more people. Here, you're, from the kid, from the teacher perspective, there's two teachers on a team, and they can coordinate all of those types of things much more readily and much than if there's a third teacher that you're then rotating on a different schedule. So to me, it was one of the big advantages of the model that we ended up going with. There were other advantages, and I don't think this was even listed as one, but I think it really allows teachers much more flexibility for those movement pieces and the unstructured time that we know pre-adolescents need to thrive.
Sure.
Thank you.
Other questions?
It's probably too early to ask this, or to ask and expect like a specific answer, but the number of students... answer but under the the number of students in staffing, we're approximating 146th grade students, will we be all right to soften it, will we be realizing staffing efficiencies with this move?
Yep, so no is a short answer. We we're looking to it's called the budget dependent but our what we'll come out with next month as we promised would be where the staff will be distributed in a way that's equitable based on a per student basis between the four elementary schools in Amherst. I think the efficiencies will be realized three years from now, assuming the building project goes through. But at this point, we're spreading people across multiple buildings so it's we're looking to be cost neutral with the exception of the ARPA funds that we have that's specific to the sixth grade move and that'll fund some of the administrative pieces that that we feel like are needed. But this is not being done for cost saving reasons, this is being done for educational and space reasons as well as the future building project.
Perfect.
Thank you.
Jennifer.
So in the executive summary, it says that the sixth graders will be on a different bell schedule so I assume that's the schedule.
Oh, sorry, yeah.
No, that's fine. So I assume that means that the bell will ring at different times in those classrooms that are assigned to sixth graders and I assume that's possible in the building because I thought at one point I heard in the high school it wasn't possible to have a two different bell schedules.
Yeah, so we're not thinking of adding more bells that are disruptive. It's really in that wing that teachers who are in adjacent classrooms will work out when the students transition in the same way we do with Comanante's right now. So there's no bells at Fort River but there's a set time when students transition between the two and even the sixth grades right now in Amherst share students. It feels very age appropriate to not rely on bells, they'll have to ignore the bells the rest of the day so I I get that part.
Okay.
But adding bells is not something that we we want to do.
So they'll still hear the bells but they'll ignore them, the sixth graders?
Exactly.
Okay.
Yeah, hopefully not the seventh and eighth graders.
Gotcha, thank you.
Other questions? No? Then I will move that we approve the sixth grade program as described in the executive summary for sixth grade students who will be educated at Amherst Regional Middle School starting in the fall of 2023. Is there a second?
Second.
Moved by Allison, seconded by Peter and we will take Peter has not called me back so we will just do a a voice vote. So all those in favor, raise your hand. The motion passes unanimously, four to zero.
Thank you so much. Thanks for the support and the continued feedback and again, thanks to Mary Kylie, you know, I want to say Mika McGee and Claire Coco, meeting with Mary and myself very frequently and and there's continued collaboration there to make it work on all ends so yeah, thank you.
Thank you. Thanks for coming out tonight. Next up is our update on the Amherst Elementary School Building Project. So I'll look to Ben and Mike for that.
Sure, so we had a meeting on Friday. Trying to think of how much time, maybe I can just show this in the background while we're talking about some of the videos, the MP4 videos that we continue to put in the newsletter. See if I can do this effectively while talking. But the design continues to be refined and in my opinion improved throughout the course. I mean, videos are great, it's really exciting to think about this building. I've not seen a building like this in our community. You know, we don't have as many new buildings that are you know like this and so we continue to refine and receive color, you know, ideas about color and materials but a lot of our focus really now is making sure that we're getting all the information at the cost estimator so that we can get a cost estimate next month that we feel you know comfortable with and then planning public engagement. You'll see in the newsletter on Friday that there's a morning and an evening event planned. I believe it's the third week in January, third or fourth week in January but it'll be in the newsletter on Friday where the community can come in, get to see the images but also get to see this is what a cost estimator would say this the the current design costs. Like in every public building project, there'll be decisions to be to need to be made that aren't just about the cost but then there are some that are purely are there in a less expensive ways to produce the same outcomes for projects like this. And so that's sort of what's on tap right now. I know that the Tammy Sullivan Daley, our interim principal at Fort River, has been in touch with the architects and assuming the project goes through, and I'm assuming but I think that's fair to say it for this purpose, the architects are eager in May and June to come and meet with students at Fort River and then at Wildwood to get their feedback on these things because at that point, we'll be getting into much more detailed design features. I think where we are with design is what we need for the cost estimate, which is the critical piece. We do need to have submissions of the MSBA for them to they will have lots of thoughts for us about design and and there'll be continued iterative dialogue between the building committee as well and the MSBA but that's sort of where we are, I think, in the update. We're continuing to work on energy models, you know, some of the windows and the exterior, see if I can pull up that video but some of the windows shifted because we want to get I think it's then we'll have better language than me for this but 22% I think of window to wall ratio and so they're doing some adjusting there and looking at different materials and different options so that we not just say, oh, this is the cost but this would be the cost if we used X, Y, or Z material so we get as much information as we can. But Ben, do you want to figure out what I'm missing?
Oh, yeah, I was going to say that's a pretty good summary. I mean, there was like a kind of went into the little bit about like flooring materials, that kind of thing but that's the gist of it, I'd say. And then the um have here as the community forums being January 18th and or 19th.
I think they shifted it back a week to give more time for town council and the school committee to have meetings with them so I think it ended up being exactly one week after.
So 25th, 26th?
I believe it's 25th, 26th. I think the 25th in the morning at 3:00 and the other ones in the eve the 26th at 6:30 in the evening but those will be confirmed in the in the newsletter on Friday. They'll be virtual because just in terms of access, we've the architects felt like it was the broadest way to get the best access to a larger community. They they like coming out, they like doing in person in person kind of events but we know that that may continue to be limiting for some some folks in our community. Yeah.
Make sure that doesn't fall through the cracks, that is something that we can talk about in the future.
Yeah, absolutely. I mean, I think when we get to agenda planning, we felt like this agenda looked pretty full.
Yeah.
But this build project's you know not going to occur till fall you know in terms of being implemented but I think to your point, the planning of it needs to matter like you know you can't like get to 26 and be like, oh, we didn't want those.
Right.
So to be you know I do have that ready to you know share with the group and whenever the committee would like that to be on the agenda, I'm happy to come present it.
Great. The other thing is so in November, I attended the MASCE conference, the Massachusetts Association of School Committees and I attended a breakout session about building projects, about MSBA building projects and it was given by like an owner's project manager firm, an architecture firm. And one of the things they talked about is that it's important and this is for way future planning, it's not directly related to the design, that it's important to have staff or to have someone who is experienced in or knows how to manage a green building like this one. And they mentioned something about like Bunker Hill Community College has a program that trains people to to manage green buildings, which I thought sounded really cool. And so they essentially said you have to either have you have to either have a a job, someone whose job it is to run the green building and a you know a position at a competitive salary to draw someone who has that experience and or you have to have people already on staff who have the capacity to learn about those things. So it's just something I wanted to put out there for us to think about when the you know when we get to the point of opening the building that we have that expertise on staff.
Thank you.
Any other comments or questions? No? Okay.
I think I got most of the videos out.
Sounds great, thank you.
Thanks, yeah.
You know, and I didn't want to risk the wifi to run it here so I don't have eyes in the back of my head. Great, so next up is our FY oh, it should say FY24 budget process, not FY23 budget process, so I apologize for that. So this is just in general, one of our one of the goals that we voted on for Mike for this year was to work with us on trying other ways to engage more of the community using in in the budget process such as through PGOs or CPAC and MPAC, sorry, Special Ed Parent Advisory Council and multilingual parent advisory councils and other ways to engage community in in the budget. Also wanted to take time attached here is more just as FYI is the the financial indicators presentation that we got at that joint meeting with the town council as well and then I pulled out separately this slide that's just on the timeline so that we have we can access that pretty easily as we're having this conversation. And then separately, so we're packing a lot into this topic, I attached the the draft the I think it it says draft on there on the file but I think it was close to the final survey that the regional school committee did to collect input and feedback from the community. I personally found all of that, the the numbers of people that submitted and the and the quality and sort of candidness that they wrote in the open open ended responses was really helpful and and interesting. We don't usually get that quality and depth of information during our budget hearings or budget forums so I wanted us to sort of consider, I know it's a little it's later but consider doing something similar so that maybe in January, we have similar levels of information from the elementary community. So just putting that out there but let's start first with the I shall look to the committee. Where do you want to start? Do we want to start talking about the the timeline and the process for engaging the community? I mean, this is one way.
Should we turn that up? I don't know if it's distracting to have this up or helpful for this topic.
And why don't you keep it up because I I don't know that everybody has it up in front of them.
Okay, sure, sure.
Because I I see you're looking at it so um so we can start there about maybe with the sure. I see some nodding heads, folks nodding heads about doing a similar survey, so interest? Peter?
Um, yes. I mean, any you know I was surprised at the the quantity and quality of the of the feedback that we got from the forum, which obviously is not a you know, you don't just throw that into a spreadsheet and out pops a budget but it was a great just you know complimentary perspective so I think anything we do we could do like that. We also have and I don't know if we've if we've thought about this yet but we have a a town charter requirement where we have the school committee has to hold our student to teacher ratio, we're not you know eliminating specials, we're not eliminating bus routes, you know, it's like that you maintain that and then and then you present that's that's what it's going to cost. And then then I think once you have that, then you can say, okay, well, if we meet guidance, this 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 is how much we have to then remove from that. That's that's when it gets tricky, especially given the fact that ARPA is still around because you know if if we are X number of dollars away from the two and a half percent guidance to maintaining level services, there'll be that temptation or or well, there'll be the consideration, I shouldn't say temptation because we haven't looked at the details yet, but there'll be the possibility of potentially filling some or all of that with ARPA. That is expanding our already $400,000 ish padding in the budget, which will then will have have a reckoning with in FY25 and six, which is you know will be part of the discussion but I think to answer your your first general question, I I do like in general talking about you know this is how we build the budget from the funding, all the funding that we get, not just not just the funding from Amherst, town of Amherst but all the funding, including state and and Title I and and saying you know that this is what we are going to be able to preserve. It's I think the other complication obviously is that our contracts aren't resolved, so we're going to have to make some assumptions about costs and staffing is a huge cost and has implications but if we can if we if we at least make some reasonable assumptions as as a template to start, I think that would I think that would that's how I would like to approach it.
I think, let me give me a second, I have my notes for what I talked about because I think that's actually I'm going to see if there's anybody who wants to speak before I I dig this up because I had my notes on sort of a good you know thoughts on the starting point and sort of how we got to the 4% but I'm going to look to see if Jennifer, Ben, wants to.
I want to at this time.
Let me.
I mean, I could remember some if you want me to just share Allison.
Sure.
Yeah, I mean, one of the assumptions that is contributing is the estimate we got from the health insurance around health insurance is to estimate an 8% increase in health insurance. So that has that's obviously above the two and a half percent increase. All of our all districts in Massachusetts got a letter from the state assuming a 14 point roughly 14% increase in added district costs. We don't have many added district students at the Amherst elementary level but 14% is a lot, well above two and a half percent. Energy costs, you know, some are fixed but some aren't fixed, you know, if I fixed I mean locked in. Right now, energy costs are quite variable but unclear which direction that'll head as we get towards winter and and thinking ahead towards next year. So there's a number of kind of challenges we have, you know, electricity rates, for instance, there's you know people have seen going up quite a bit. So a lot of our quote unquote fixed costs, you know, health insurance, we can't say, no, we're not going to increase 8%. We we're obligated to offer health insurance as we should, we're not going to have electricity, right? Those are things that are fixed and that are increasing at a much faster rate than two and a half percent. So there's others but I just you know those would just be some concrete tangible ones.
Right, great. And that was what so I found and and I think you know Peter, you mentioned this when we were talking about the BCG meeting, which is you know compensation just for instruction and special ed teachers, just those two those groups there is 55% of our of our budget and that's that chunk is is unsettled and we're all the the last proposal that the regional school committee had made was already higher than what was what was in this year's budget and so it's you know this year's budget is going to be higher than than what where we are right now, which then just sort of adds to wherever we land on that for next year and that's more than half of our budget. So I think that that was and once that's settled, that's that's settled. So again, it's not discretionary at that point so there's very little in our budget that is that is not fixed at that point so. Peter?
I just the other thing I would add and and I did think that the the BCG discussion was was productive in in the I think I think it it evolved a bit of a it evolved it evolved the discussion of you know this this tension point between the town council approved the bottom line, right, of 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 our funding and and the school committee decides how to spend it and and never the you know and one way of looking at it is never the twain shall meet, that you should just put your hands over yours and say if if you're the town council and say, we don't want to hear about what you need, you know, just we we vote the final budget and you guys. And and on one sense, I I appreciate the that acknowledgement of of the responsibility. On the other hand, I I feel like it's it's part of our our duty as school committee to say, okay, well, if we meet two and a half percent, this is what two and a half percent means to the schools, right? This is it would mean you know potentially cutting XYZ and so defining what XYZ is. You know, the town council can then take that into consideration as they're balancing the rest of the town budget and making decisions about about where funding should go. But if they don't have that information, right, if they don't know that, oh, two two and a half percent of the schools is going to mean this, then then we're then we're not doing part of our jobs, right? And so that's in terms of like advocacy, you know, I I felt a lot of understanding on the part of the of the town council reps there and that we're all in the same boat and you know we all sort of you know value but but in terms of the collaboration, that's that's part of what we need to decide is is not just you know we're going to spend it XYZ and this is the guidance and that's the guidance and we just need to pump table. It's well, this is exactly what it would mean if we had to go to two and a half and so and I I thought that they 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 heard that and and understood that and thought that was an appropriate way to discuss it so I felt I felt like that was a good a good step forward.
Yeah, I think that. Yeah, I think that that's been, that was sort of my frustration last year was this my perceived, my perception was that there was an unwillingness on the part of the town council to, to talk about sort of the decisions that they make and the power that they have to, to balance across the different needs and the different departments and sort of the, the sort of, well, we can't, we, you're, you have the responsibility of deciding the school budget, we, so we can't talk about that, and yet it is totally within the responsibility of the town council to decide how big that budget can be. And we owe it to them to be able to explain that, even if that means having to go into a level of detail that makes them uncomfortable and makes them feel like we're getting too much in the weeds for them. I think, and I really like the suggestion to talk about what that would mean, so, you know, in terms of it's going to cost us, we actually need, you know, with enrollment changes and shifts and student, anticipated shifts and student needs, there's going to be the savings, but we're going to have these increases, so this is how much we need, and if that's 4%, 5%, then demonstrate that, and then showing earlier on in the process, what are the cuts, the specific cuts that that might be in order to get to the guidance that the town is making and recommending, and then having that conversation. Because I think we, we don't get to that until the very end, you know, sort of it's like in February and March, and at that point, there's not a lot that, we don't have a lot of flexibility to make changes at that point, that becomes sort of dig deeper into ARPA funding or other, or hope that we get more grants, right? So I think if, if we can sort of move that a little bit earlier in the process, and maybe now is a good time to look at the timeline.
Sure.
Because, and I, and I think also, you know, when we focus on the spending needs as opposed to where the funding, because I know there's so much uncertainty until January timeframe about how much money in Chapter 70 that's going to come to the town and other sort of things are unclear until that, but we do have a good idea of how much it's going to cost us to deliver our programs. So our budget is due at the end of March. I'm going to pull it up here, sorry. Mike, sorry.
Yeah, and tentatively on our long-term schedule, it looks like we would be slated to vote the Amherst Public Schools budget on the 13th of March. You're right that there's technically more time, but in terms of our typical meeting schedule, this is, this is not on this, but I just want to add it, I think the additional wrinkle from the town's perspective is with the change in governor, the governor's budget's going to come out quite a bit later than it typically does, usually at the end of January, where House One comes out and just governor's budget, and it's anticipated to be quite a bit later, and this happens every time there's a change in, in Beacon Hill, so, and Boston, so there's a couple of variances this year that is going to make it, I think, more challenging to go about that. I think the Amherst Public School is something that you've heard me advocate for, for a while, is that with the change in formal government, I often wonder why we're planning as far ahead, you know, if you look at other municipalities, they sort of pass budgets a little bit later than we do. I'm not advocating to change the March 13 date, but I think that the town may feel some uncertainty. It's very different in another district I work for, where there's multiple towns, but in this particular town right now, we do have more flexibility than we used to, in my opinion, to be a little more deliberative, because we're not kind of looking at X date to get on a warrant in the same way. That's not advocating for or against town meeting, right, I'm not going down that road, but purely from a perspective of fiscal timeline, we do have a little more flexibility, so if we, we ever wanted to have that conversation as we go along, if we're not getting as much information from the town, just something I want to keep in mind. But right now, it's slated for March 13th in terms of voting the school budget.
Yep. So working backwards from, from there, that may, would mean that the budget hearing, which is different than the forum, would have to be at the February meeting, is that correct?
Correct. We'd follow the typical timeline of January, initial presentation, February hearing, and then March 13th vote, you know, unless there's a change in that, which I think may be good to have a conversation with the town as well, and that's another perhaps BCG topic as well.
Yeah.
Because it is about coordinating timelines.
Right, right. Peter?
Mike, if I could try and summarize what you said about the, the schedule there? So are you saying that it would be better if, if our final budget vote for our committee was later, and that you don't see any reason why it couldn't be?
Yes, that was better. Thank you.
Okay.
Peter?
So, all right, well, then maybe let's talk about that then. I mean, we just, we've, we've hit a lot tonight about how much we want public input and how, how, how many large things are changing that we're not going to know about. I, I mean, I don't know off the top of my head the entire pro con list, but, but why not let's explore making that later? If, if there is no local or state regulation that is requiring us to be so early, let's at least have that conversation. I mean, maybe that's a BCG thing, I don't know.
Yeah.
Like we would have the budget vote in April.
Right.
Or something, and that would give us an extra month.
Yeah, or at least the end of March, you know, but I do think, sorry.
Right, right.
Yeah, but I think it would be good, just because we are sizable, the town budget for coordinating that with the town, but I would, personally, I'd be in favor of that. I think it's better for engagement, I think we'll have more information later on. I mean, one of the things that is really painful is when we, I'm bringing, or we're bringing a budget for you to vote on, and then you don't have, we all don't have, we all have incomplete information, which is true every year, no matter how late you go, but, you know, the later in the spring you get to, there are fewer variables. But, you know, it never feels good when we, you all pass a budget, then I come back a month later, well, actually, you know, either good or bad news, and, and, you know, it just, it actually, I think it negatively influences people's confidence in the budget process when that happens.
So given the, I am happy to follow up with Paul Bach, the town manager is the one that sort of calls and convenes those meetings, so I can follow up with him afterward to say that we would like to have another one to talk about the timeline. I think given today's date, that probably would be in January, so when we get to agenda planning, I think we'll still want to be talking about and looking at sort of a first pass budget at the January meeting, because even, even if we do, are successful in pushing it out to April, we'll want to be able to start and have those, have that time to, to have those conversations.
Agreed.
And get the public.
So, Allison, so you, you were saying earlier, I thought you were saying or starting to say about the idea of us, us coming up with what, what would our budget look like based on what we need? And that goes along with what we've been saying, like, at what, like, at what point do we get to tell the town, this is what we need, as opposed to them telling us, this is what you get? So how does that fit into all of this, into the timeline, like, where would that fit in?
I would think, and I haven't, I don't have a, I have ideas, so just, just ideating out loud right here, is that, that meeting, our conversation in January could be looking at that, sort of a first pass at more, you know, I did that back of the envelope, passed it by Doug and Mike to sort of, you know, reality test that. But, but I think sort of taking that sort of deeper than the back of the envelope and looking at sort of what, what does that look like and what would we need, and sort of looking at what that difference might be. And I think at that meeting is when we can also be having the conversations early about, not specifics, about what those cuts might have to be, but sort of the magnitude, order of magnitude of the cuts, right, sort of like, wow, that we can't do that without really digging into student experience or, you know, changing XYZ that's core to sort of what we believe is our mission, right? So I think we can have that sort of broad stroke kind of conversation in January, but then the follow-on would kind of depend on their willingness to talk about the, the timing and then sort of pushing that out. But I, and I, I think it helps the conversation if we're talking about our spending, which is where, like, this is what we'll need to spend, we're missed, we have this funding shortfall, because I think too often, and it gets confusing for the public to follow also, when we're talking just about the funding and the appropriations that we have, and then how are, how are we going to spend it? That was a lot of babble, did that make sense?
Yeah, yeah.
Other thoughts? Peter?
So with the realization of what you're talking about, then, I guess this is a question for Mike, would, would this be like a homework item for Doug to, to put together, and would, is that, is it, is it fair slash realistic of him to put something like that together at the higher, at the higher level, like in the January timeframe? Like, are, will there potentially be, say, you know, major shoes to drop at that point, like, that we'll know a better idea of the health insurance or other items?
Yeah, I don't think health insurance is going to change much, that's, that's a good example of one that we, I mean, we'll get a final number later on, but I don't think we'll know anything more in January than we do, we know now. I do think that's sort of what we typically do in January, is a high level, I don't think it's asking any more than we've typically done, so I do think that's a reasonable ask.
Yeah, I think the key difference is what we'd be looking at is not all the way to what are the, you know, here's how I get to 2.5%, but stopping at that point of like, here's what we need, here's what the gap is to 2.5%, and then we have that as a sort of roll up our sleeves conversation in January, as opposed to you coming to us with a, you know, final proposal.
Right, yep.
Yep.
That makes sense. We could do that.
Okay. So I feel like we have some clear follow-ups for our January meeting, does any other thoughts on this? Yep, good. Moving right along. So our next topic was the, Paul Bachman has asked for us to name our representatives for the Joint Capital Planning Committee, and so for folks that aren't familiar with that, that's a group of representatives from the different town boards that come together and talk about what are the capital budget needs for the upcoming year. Jennifer and Irv have been serving in that role, and I checked, both of, both of you have confirmed that you're interested in completing, continuing in that role, so unless there's objections, consider yourself appointed, all right? And I will let Paul know that you two are both going to continue to represent us, thank you for that.
Sure.
You're welcome. And future agenda planning, so we have, we just added a bunch of things, so we penciled in the video monitoring system for January, so looking at sort of the current policy there, and talking about that and as it relates to elementary schools, because I think, we don't have, as I recall, we don't have any cameras right now. School building committee update from the designers, I just added while we were meeting the sixth grade bathroom question, I don't know if, is that the right timing for that?
I think so.
Okay.
I mean, it's up to the committee, but I think, you know, to me, I think we have a lot of feedback, I think, even if it's not, even if we wait till February to make a decision to like engage that specific item, because it's, there's a complexity to it, so.
Okay.
I would like to have it on in January.
Can I request for that agenda type of topic? So there was the survey, the survey results were actually posted in this week's, in tonight's packet, and it was a, it was individual responses listed, which is great, because you get to see the comments, but it would be great to get just the data tabulated, so that we don't have to count, just that one question, that's, that was quantitative.
Yep, absolutely.
My A key doesn't work on my.
It works.
And unfortunately, it's the pinky, right? It's not me. And, sorry.
So instead of video monitoring system, I might just, I'm sorry, if I could jump in, I would just say, video modern, video protocols or access protocols, because it's not about the system, it's about, you know, as I recall, making sure I'm consistent with the committee, is we have a video system, how do we access it, who accesses it, how does it get access and when?
Right, right.
That was the.
Yeah, and like security video, like, now we're not talking about like videos, but just the security video.
Right.
That's a helpful clarification.
Yeah, just want to make sure.
There was, I don't think, there was, there was talk about potentially having the, a joint meeting with the building committee, I think we don't need to have that at that, at that particular meeting, but I think part of that conversation will be understanding sort of the community input plan or feedback, community engagement, sorry, of the, with the building committee, because we'll be heading into sort of big, a lot of big decisions and milestones in that project.
I think the other one that I'd like to add is, and we're meeting with staff about this the week prior, which I think is appropriate, is just the, kind of following up to our last meeting, what the staffing, assuming level staffing, what the staffing would look like in each of the four schools next year, so representing that to staff the week before, because we're asking for their feedback, but I actually think, one of the things we're going to ask about in the survey is, do we get this right? Where are the things, I mean, it's not like, oh, yeah, we need four more of these, it's got to be zero sum game, except for the ARPA funds that were specifically just dedicated to this, but I think the committee should be involved in that, so if that's agreeable to the committee, I'd like to add that to the agenda.
Yep, okay. And looking out, I, we're not planning the agenda for February, but I'm going to suggest that we look to another day that week. I love you all, but I don't know that I want to spend Valentine's Day with you all.
That's a good one.
So we don't have to answer that now, but, you know, Wednesday or Thursday might be possible alternatives, so if folks don't have, unless folks have a hard conflict on either of those dates, then.
That Thursday's a no for me.
Thursday's a no?
The 16th is a no, yeah.
Okay, so the 15th.
And I have to double check things, which I'd rather not have my calendar on a screen right now, but, but.
So we'll confirm the, the date, and if we have to look at another week, we'll make sure it doesn't conflict with the regional school committee meeting.
Okay. Great. Can we talk about our meeting format for the January meeting and future meetings? I'm concerned that if Amherst Media isn't able to live stream, I know it doesn't, I know, I know it doesn't impact open meeting law, but if people aren't able to, to meeting in, in real time, other than coming in person, then, then it's less accessible than pre-pandemic, because pre-pandemic, they could watch it via Amherst Media, and today they can't, for whatever reason. I don't, I'm not sure the technical reasons why Amherst Media isn't able to stream tonight, but if their connection's no longer active and they can't stream if we're here, it seems less accessible to me than, than pre-pandemic. I liked meeting in person, this has been great, but I, I'm, I just want to make sure that we're being as transparent and accessible as possible, so if Amherst Media thinks they can get their cables up and running again, that would be great, but if not, would we consider going back to virtual?
I think that, we were assured, I think, tonight that it was in, in working for tonight, and pre-pandemic, we actually didn't have consistent streaming before that, it
Our board of directors, so we have two staff members behind the room there, recording this, and so let me just give you their explanation.
Thank you. I'm sorry if I did not get it right, my apologies.
Oh, no, 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 I think we're all.
Thank you.
Thank you. Nice to see you.
Ben?
Just had a technical question, we can just put it out to the, to the world, if anyone can answer this at a later date, that's fine. But couldn't we, like, I'm looking at the, the same exact laptop that I would be if we were home virtual. Couldn't we do that as an option? Like, be in person, but then also have the link like, like Vera said? And I feel like that would solve some problems.
Oh, I think so.
Right, in case, in case those go down, we would have this as the.
Yeah, I think, I think.
That's sort of what the town council does.
Yeah, they, there was a concern, and I don't, I apologize, I'm looking to you, Mike, because I feel like you had mentioned that there was some challenge with, with that approach, but I don't know if it's, I would assume wifi bandwidth here would be sufficient for us. I mean, if we turn off video streaming on here, I would, I would think. I think the question, because if we did the Google meet, I guess it's a question of what would actually be broadcast and what would be streaming? Because it wouldn't be coming from those cameras, it would be coming from somebody's webcam. Correct?
I believe that's correct. Yeah, I mean, it's.
Go ahead.
It's my personal opinion. So I'm stepping out of, if it's okay to transition from my role of like, this is what I think technically, to this is. And I'm trying, I'm not trying to critique the town council or anything, but what I valued here is that I wasn't looking at the screen that much, I was looking at each of you, and I think if given that option, you know, personally, I'm not sure I see as much value in meeting in person. I think for me, it would just call into question what makes the most sense. And I know each person could make their individual decision on that, but probably my individual decision at that point, you know, would be influenced by looking here and talking into the screen instead of kind of the human piece. I'm not saying it's not a technically sufficient answer, but I just wonder if we do that, different committee members and myself and different staff members might have different opinions about the relative merits, and would we be opening it up where people could do, like the town council does, either it could be present or virtual, or, you know, just these are more questions. And so I just wanted to share my, my personal impressions and then ask that question.
Peter?
This is a great discussion during agenda planning, but I would love to continue. No, I'm not being, I'm being sincere, I would love to continue it, but I don't want to start going down that road. So maybe we could put, in spirit of agenda planning, if we could put meeting format at the beginning of our next agenda, even if it's five minutes, we blow by it and everything's great. If not, we can talk about what the format is. And in the meantime, in terms of scheduling, you know, we'll, we'll, we'll trust the chair and the superintendent to do the very best they can to implement, you know, technically accessible in-person meetings.
Okay. December 7th, 2022. I, Allison McDonald authorized payroll in the amount of negative $4,995.82 dated December 14th, 2022, and I signed that on December 5th, 2022. I authorized payroll in the amount of $761,745.92 dated November 30th, 2022, and I signed that on November 30th, 2022. And last, I authorized by my signature payables in the amount of $293,227.8 for a warrant dated November 11th, 2022. This includes general fund expenses of $190,916.20, revolving fund expenses of $30,815.70, grant fund expenses of $9,265.52, capital spending of $60,150.70, and student activities fund of $1,876.33. And I signed that on November 21st, 2022. And that is all. We have gifts tonight?
Yep.
I'll put those up. And I move that we accept the following gifts from Martha Olver, number 996432, to support Crocker Farm principal at the principal's discretion, the amount of $10. From Martha, Martha Olver, number 996453, to support Crocker Farm at the principal's discretion, in the amount of $10. From Tony Davis, ARHS alum, to support two three-by-six cedar raised garden bed kits for Crocker Farm Elementary, in the estimated value of $350 for a cash total of $20. And in addition to support, to accept a grant from Special Olympics Massachusetts, Inc., to support $500 each to Fort River and Wildwood for unified champion school expenses. Teacher coach stipends for events, equipment supplies, and in support of UCS activities, uniforms, and transportation, in the amount of $1,000. Is there a second?
Second.
Move by Allison, second by Ben. Any discussion? So we will take a voice vote, so all those in favor, please raise your hand. Motion passes unanimously, four to zero. And? Ben?
I move that we adjourn.
Second. There's no discussion, so we will take a voice vote again. All those in favor? Motion passes four to zero. Thank you. We're adjourned?
Thank you, Amherst Media.
Thank you, Amherst Media.